All right, Mr. Rittenhouse. Okay, hello everyone, good afternoon or evening actually. We are at the January 25th, 2021, regular meeting of the Akron Board of Education. For joining us, Mr. Pinton, roll call please.
Dr. Akbar.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
President.
Ms. Autry.
Here.
Mr. Bravo.
Present.
Dr. Hall.
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Here.
Mrs. McKittrick. And welcome, Abigail Kearns, our student board member from Ellet CLC.
I'm here.
Yes, thank you very much for joining us, Abigail. And if you would be so kind to lead us all in the pledge of allegiance, I'm going to ask all board members to mute their microphones as we participate in this pledge of allegiance, please.
Alrighty, hold on one second, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Abigail. Next, we're going to move into community and school reflections. And I know we did have Kyrie Reston here. Last meeting, we did invite him back to come, I believe he's going to come to the next meeting to talk with us, so we can actually hear his report. But we want to start with Abigail, since she is here, to share with us what's going on with her and her students at Ellet.
Hi, my name is Abigail Kearns. I am a sophomore at Ellet CLC. I'm in the hospitality and tourism pathway. This is my first year as a student board member and the first time I am representing something bigger than myself. I am actually very nervous, but I am honored to be here. I would like to share with the board experiences on behalf of my APS peers and myself. In my honors English class, my teacher, Mrs. Brochus, told the class she would fill us in about the last board meeting, talking about the previous board meeting. She said there was talk about students coming back to school in March. Knowing this, I had talked to Mrs. Chapman in the fine arts department and she had let me talk to my peers in her class at the end of the period to get feedback on what they're feeling and their experiences with virtual learning. My peers have a lot of mixed emotions about going back. Some students want to come back because it's their senior year and they don't want to miss out on any of the activities. Some students are scared to go out of their house because they have health problems that put them in high-risk categories. And if they do get COVID, then they might not recover. Some students feel like they're getting used to the virtual and they want to continue the year that way. Other students feel like if we return, it will be a whole lot of change at one time. And they have had so much change already adapting to the new remote learning and they just want to stay that way. I understand the way that all the students feel. My head is telling me that we should stay virtual, but my heart is telling me that we should go back. In school, there are a lot of social interactions. Me personally, I am a social butterfly and I talk to a lot of people. There are some days where I wasn't like having a very good day or something had happened that just would ruin my mood. And I would talk to my friends or other teachers that would put me in a good mood. And I feel like being in a better mood would help me be better in my classes. In my freshman year, I had a science teacher, Mrs. Suda Meyer. She would make science jokes all the time that weren't really that funny, but she would just laugh at them regardless of who was laughing with her. It would put me in a better mood because she thought the jokes are funny, but no one else did. That's ever happened to you guys. In-person classes, we have group work and we have a lot of collaboration and we do our work and have fun at the same time. This encouraged a lot more work to get done because who wouldn't want to have fun while they were learning at the same time? It helps to be in school because teachers are there to motivate students every day. They keep pushing them to do their best. Even though I get really good grades and I'm in the honors classes, I do find virtual learning very, very difficult. It's very hard to maintain the grades that I have. Last year, my grades were 95 and above in every class, but now they're declining towards like the A minuses, Bs areas. It's not affecting me as much as it is other students. But I do know that some of the kids were averaging Bs and Cs during in-person learning. So if it's making me decline, I can only imagine it's making them decline as well. However, during virtual learning, we did have intercession and that is a good thing because it helps the students. They can make up the missing work to improve their grades and get the credit that they needed. These statements and questions were provided directly from my peers and classmates after the announcement that we were returning. Some students found a concern that others will not follow the rules regarding COVID. So they want to know what the plan is to make sure that the students are following the protocols. They also want to know what happened to the hybrid plan that was mentioned a while ago. Another question is if we choose to stay remote with the classes, like will the classes go back to normal? Like the 90-minute classes versus the 50-minute classes? Can students choose a hybrid plan? Like some classes they can do in school and then some they can do online. Also, a few of the students wanted me to get clarification on what happens if the teacher they have stays remote and they go back to school or vice versa, they want to know what happens with that. I would like to thank you for taking the time to consider the questions from my peers and myself. Before I close, the Ellet CLC students and staff welcome Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company as the named partner of the Goodyear Academy and Applied Engineering. Under the direction of Academy Coach Mr. Boldry, Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company will work closely with our automotive and project lead-the-way students. Project-based learning, job shadowing, and internships are part of the partnership. The student board wishes good health to all APS students, staff, and their families.
Thank you very much, Abigail. What an amazing report. And I think that you had some amazing questions that a lot of our students are asking as well as our family members. So thank you very much. I'm going to ask Dr. James to, maybe if you could share all of those lists of questions so that he can provide a response to you and then maybe there's some way we can post those questions that you provided to, for other students and families to see. So thank you very much. So next we have for community and school reflections, we have Mrs. McKittrick followed by Ms. Mansfield. Ms. Mansfield, and if anyone else wants to go after, please line up in the chat. Thank you, Mrs. McKittrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. What a tough act to follow. Thanks, Abigail. Great job. Very quickly, I want to thank the principals in the Kemmer-Garfo cluster, the ones who've, I've already spoken with and the ones with whom I have scheduled phone calls, I want to thank them for being so open to talking with me and taking their time to listen to me. So thank you very much, Kemmer-Garfo principals.
Thank you.
All right, I thought you were going to say something else. Mrs. Mansfield.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. Abigail, fantastic job. I don't know, Dr. Akbar, if we should have the students go first because I don't know. Wow, they, they outshine us all. So that was fantastic. And if that's you nervous, I can't wait to see you relax. Real quick, I want to thank the Student Services Department for the card that I received. That was lovely to recognize the, us for being on the board. That was really great. Thank you so much. I think I've been on for 12 years. I don't know if I've got, ever gotten one from Student Services, so that's really awesome. Highlighted the last two weeks was on Friday when Dr. Akbar, Dr. Hall and I got to attend the AAA graduation. Always one of the best things of the year, wouldn't miss those. You know, things are a little different with COVID, but I was, when we were sitting there, I was saying how lovely it is to get to actually see the parents of the graduates come forward and stand with them. It's a really precious moment. I don't know if when we do graduations in the future, if somehow we can incorporate great things like that because it's very special to have them get to shine right up there with their graduate and also just have that close-up moment. It was really fantastic. Also, highlight was the Urban League celebration for Martin Luther King Junior Day on Monday. The treats that came in our mugs were really amazing as well as the presentation, just a really great morning and a great way to start the week that also included the inauguration. So just a fantastic event also. So kudos to Teresa Legre and all at the Urban League. Thanks also to Ward A Councilperson, Seamus Malick, for allowing Patrick and NJ and I to share a little bit about what's going on in Akron Public Schools with his Ward A meeting. He does a great job. I learned a lot of things that I really was happy to know as well at that. So thanks for that. And that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mansfield. Next, we have Dr. Hall and then if there's anyone else.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I wanted to sort of echo what Ms. Mansfield just talked about in referring to the AAA graduation. You know, it's now, I think, my second time being able to attend that, you know, in my time here on the board. And I'm just, I'm never, I'm just, I'm always amazed at, at the energy that the families bring and the enthusiasm. You know, this year, and you know, this year during COVID, obviously, it was a bit more challenging, you know, because of trying to maintain appropriate distancing, but, but I think Mrs. Miss, Mrs. Green-Palota, I think, and her staff serve a lot of credit. Because not only did they put on a great graduation, but they also did it in a way that was very, very safe. I think anybody that would have been there would have felt completely comfortable being in the room. You know, they brought one family, one family in at a time, you know, into this gigantic auditorium. And you walk in and there's this big screen where each, each candidate for graduation has those, those, those pictures on the board. And you know, each student, you know, got a chance to choose, you know, it's sort of some, some of the baby pictures and and one of the things that I, I had to remark looking at pictures was, you know, this is 18, 20 years ago, you know, for a lot of these students and I'm looking at the, the phones, I'm looking at the style of dress and the background and I just was feeling like, I, I never thought much of being old before, but I'm starting to realize I'm starting to get just a little, I'm older now than I used to be. And so it was interesting seeing that, that, that on the screen, so. And some of the pictures were just really, really funny and the families, and the families themselves just had a great time taking pictures of their graduates. And so anyway, it was just a fantastic experience and just wanted to again, thank all of those families for being safe and the staff again for putting on a great graduation as well. Also wanted to thank, you know, there've been a number of folks that from the Firestone Park area, some Garfield High alumni folks, Kemmer High, Kemmer High School alumni folks that have reached out over the last week or so to express, you know, their thoughts on what we will ultimately do around naming the school this fall. And it's, I just wanted to let them know that, that they are heard. I hear you, I see you, you know, thank you for your, your constructive and professional, you know, emails and comments. And I would welcome even more of those. So again, thank you for, for your feedback and, and Mr. President, I will see the floor back to you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Dr. Hall. Ms. Autry.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just kind of piggybacking on what Dr. Hall just stated, I just wanted to acknowledge the continued emails and communications that I receive from our families and our staff. I really do appreciate the engagement. I just don't know that people recognize the size of our district is really hard for seven school board members to just be aware of everything. So I just want to acknowledge those folks who continue to reach out and, and ask if they continue to do so. A special shout out to our teachers because they are just those everyday heroes. They're keeping it going for us remotely, so I appreciate that. And just, you know, what Abigail mentioned about they're finally really adapting to this remote learning. Many of them are. So I mean, that was no easy task. And I know we go about our daily things. I just wanted to make sure that the, the teachers and support staff know that they're appreciated and keeping our buildings running every day. And then also I was able to attend my first sporting event, finally. This past weekend, I was able to attend the Bookdole Girls Basketball Team versus Wisworth. At Bookdole, unfortunately, we did take a loss, but it was just really nice to see that the sports is still something that is a common rallying factor for many people, keeping folks engaged and excited and something positive that they can focus on. And just a shout out to that staff over there who I was definitely watching keeping us safe and providing a safe environment to enjoy the sporting event. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Autry. Mr. Bravo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was debating on whether to jump in or not. Everything that I had in my notes has already kind of been mentioned. Other than finance committee, I also attended the Martin Luther King event put on by the Urban League and it was fantastic as was already mentioned. And as Mrs. Mansfield mentioned, we did the Ward A meeting. I was trying to think, this may be actually the first, and if it's not the first, it's one of the very, very few years that I have missed AAA. I can't remember missing a AAA graduation in the past. They are, as was mentioned, always one of the most special graduations for the kids that really stick to it and overcome obstacles to make sure that they hit that graduation staging and get to walk. And I really hated missing it this year. Just want to give a shout out to everyone that, that worked with those kids to make, make sure that they made it across the stage. Give a special shout out to Cody Cross, who I knew, Mrs. Mansfield and I also got to celebrate a little earlier this summer just to make sure that he, that one didn't go unnoticed from us. And so to ever, all the students and all the faculty and staff that, that made sure those students walked, thank you so much. And I don't know whether it's, this is just a general comment, but I mean, this last week has really started to feel different and in a much, in a very positive way. And I don't know if it's the, if it's a new year, if it's the inauguration, if it's the change in tone a little bit throughout, you know, that you hear, things just seem to be taking on more of a positive spin. We're talking about bringing students back in the near future and so I'm just very thankful for that. And Mr. President, maybe good at some point, just to throw on the agenda too, for us to talk about when we might, as a board, also look at coming back. Sometime in the, in the near future as we look at bringing students and staff back. So just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Actually, I have thought about that now. I'll share a little bit about that in my report later. The possibility of us getting together all in person. Some of it also has to do with the vaccine too, which we know, we don't control that timeline, but that will be a part of that as well. Just two really quick community and school reflections. One, I just want to thank the parent who sent the notice about that they had. And I want to thank Ms. Ms. Depp folk for the amount of sheer just outreach and attention to detail that she did to work with that parent. Everything they need and Dr. James as well, their leadership to fix what could have been a difficult situation for that family. They, they appear to be happy now. I just want to thank them for doing that and just really wanted to publicly thank Ms. Folk for with such grace and attention to detail. It's difficult sometimes when you reach people at their breaking point. And I think we did a great job working with that family. So thank you very much. And I also had the opportunity to attend the AAA graduation. I'm not going to go as far to say I felt owed, but I did love the baby pictures. And the other pictures that were shown and just to see some of the young people have their kids with them and watching, you know, their kids, watching them cross the stage, to me, was a beautiful thing. I, I am one of those education geeks that love all things that are educational ceremonial in nature. And so graduation was one of those things for me that I've missed. Being in person, it felt so normal. I, I don't know how else to say it. It just felt good. To thank that staff for a great job as well. And then the last thing is, because the rest of everything is, and my president's report had quite a few meetings actually in this last two weeks, almost a meeting a day with some, someone about something. But was able to, to talk through advanced APS with Ray Horner on his morning show. There was a lot of questions about, you know, the, the future of APS. And that seemed to, for a few people that I've talked to about that interview that contacted me, thought that they were really excited about these. So I wanted just to put that out there and say that, that word out. And I'll share more about that in my report. So final call, anybody else? All right, moving on, we will go to request to address the board and we have one request to address the board today by Bill Reynolds. Is, are you here?
I don't, I don't either. I did not admit him and I don't have anybody in the waiting room, so.
Okay, so if he comes, if there's any technical difficulties, if you can just let me know, Ryan.
I will.
Well, at least before we get too far in the agenda, we'll try to fit him in. We can just move him to the next meeting. Okay, so moving on to recognitions, and I believe this is Dr. James or is this Ryan? I'm not sure. For OSBA.
So yeah, attached to the agenda are certificates for each of you board members. I believe it's a certificate of appreciation from the Ohio School Boards Association. And so you will actually get a hard copy of the certificate mailed to your home address. And in essence, the certificate, well, for instance, for you, Dr. Akbar, just a certificate of appreciation. The certificate is presented to Dr. NJ Akbar, Akron City Schools, and sincere appreciation for exemplary leadership and service to public schools for School Board Recognition Month, January 2021. And it's signed by Scott Huddle, the president of OSBA, and of course Rick Lewis, who's the executive director. And again, there will be one of these for each of you and they will be mailed to your home.
Thank you very much. So happy School Board Appreciation Month. And so thank you very much. We're moving on. I believe this is Dr. Ellen McWilliams Woods for the Governor's Thomas Edison Award.
Yes, thank you.
No problem.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Akbar. I am pleased to hand this over to our Instructional Policy Committee who is excited to, this is sort of a historical award ceremony for us. And it's a long-term award that we've received that we're very proud of our involvement. This is another Katrina Halasa moment for us. We've had a few of these in recent board meetings. But I'm going to turn it over to our Instructional Policy Committee members who will introduce the presentation for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. McWilliams Woods. As you know, Dr. McWilliams would share the good news with our Instructional Policy Committee about the results of the Governor's Awards for Akron Schools again this year. And as we've done with our other special recognitions with students and staff, we are pleased to share this award with you tonight. And Ms. Karen Gijic is going to start the presentation.
The Governor's Thomas Edison Awards were established in 1985 under then-Governor Richard Celeste. Akron teachers and Akron schools received this award for the 2019-2020 school year. The Governor's Thomas Edison Awards for Excellence in Student Research and STEM Education are presented to Ohio students, schools, and teachers who extend STEM education beyond traditional classroom activities. The criteria for school and teacher awards are: Conduct a local science fair with 12 or more students. Two or more of the Science Expo students participate in one of the official area science days. We meet criteria one and two as a result of our district science fair. Criteria two is met when we qualify for District Five Science Academy at the University of Akron. To meet the third criteria, students must participate in at least one more youth science opportunity beyond the classroom. Some of the examples of opportunities our students participate in beyond the classroom include State Science Day, Regional Science and Engineering Fairs, Math Counts, Engineer for a Day Program, Science Olympiad, and many other opportunities. Since 2003, 20 individual Akron schools have received a total of 114 Thomas Edison Awards for Excellence in Student Research and STEM Education, 114 school awards. We are proud of our Akron Public School teachers who've received the Thomas Edison Award numerous times. We've designated star status to our teachers who've supported students through the process. We have included a category for our Bronze Stars teachers, teachers who have supported students in the process for up to four years. We have 521 individual teachers and faculty members who've received this award at least once and many two, three, or four times. Elizabeth Polis from Jennings is a two-time award winner. Dr. Morgan Green from Litchfield Middle is a four-time award winner. Ruth Roop from Miller South is also a four-time award winner. We've designated Silver Star status to our teachers who've supported students through the process at least five years and up to eight years. We've 71 individual teachers and faculty members who've received the award between five and eight times over the years. Lynn Webb is a five-time winner from Bookdole CLC. David Hardwick from Higher, six years. And Kristy Johnson is an eight-time award winner from Innis CLC. We've designated Gold Star status to our teachers who've supported students through this process at least nine times and up to 13 times. We have 26 individual teachers and faculty members who've received the award over the years. Three examples of the 26 Gold Star educators are Christine Millsittich, nine-year award winner from Firestone CLC. Linda Olson, 10-year award winner from East Community Learning Center. And Chris Justice, 13-year award winner from STEM Middle School. Special thanks to all the teachers who've dedicated their time to providing our students with rigorous STEM education beyond the classroom. Their time to providing our students with rigorous STEM education beyond the classroom. And a special thank you to District Science and Health Learning Specialist, Dr. Katrina Halasa.
So a huge shout out to all our faculty for supporting STEM education for our students. And Katrina, we can't thank you enough for all that you do to support their success. I think one of the last events. That I remember from 2020 was being able to be at the Science Fair and. And see all of the work that you put in every year and we're so grateful for you. I don't know, are we giving you a chance to say anything or are we not? Because we should. Do you like to share anything, Katrina?
Um, yes, I would, I would like to say to everyone, good evening, board members. And distinguished senior staff. I would like to say that I am proud as an academic mother for all the work of these amazing staff educators across the district. And as the academic STEM grandmother for all our 22,000 students across the district who trust us in. Guiding them on their journey in STEM. And just to put a little plug in, the purpose of being able to be eligible is that you do need to participate in the STEM Expo as well as doing. A science fair or engineering project at the school. And I just want to let everyone know, right now as we stand virtually. We have already 123 projects that were submitted with videos and PowerPoints. As well as 167 students total. And the best story I can tell you is we're as low as third grade. That is, is participating as well as up to 12th grade. And more importantly, we even have a group with new newcomers. That everyone is actually participating in a one project together. For our newcomers and there are six of those that have been. Submitted. So we're excited, even in a virtual world, we're excited to have it there. So thank you again and I'm humbly. Proud and thankful to work for this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Akbar, for the time.
No problem. Thank you very much and congratulations, Dr. Halasa and everyone else listed. And, and I really think that. Karen Gijic has another career in her. Because every time she gives the presentation with those, what it seems like voiceovers, but I think she's doing it live, I'm not sure. Just amazing, actually. It sounds so professionally done. It's amazing. All right, so thank you very much for that. There's no communications for this meeting and we're gonna move on to approval of the previous meeting minutes. They are listed there in the board docs for you. Hopefully everyone had a chance to review them.
Doctor, it wouldn't like me interrupting, I think Mr. Reynolds may be on with us before we proceed with the rest of the agenda.
Actually, that would be perfect. So I'm sorry, we will move. To request to address the board. Mr. Bill Reynolds, you have three minutes. Mr. Pillington will be keeping time. And he will politely let me know when you're about 10 minutes up. Just signal to you before I interrupt you. So hopefully I don't have to do that, but. You have three minutes. Thank you again for your constant engagement.
I'll keep it short tonight. I wanted to thank you guys all for. The decisions you made last meeting and. The thing I think about, a lot about the schools is they are family, they are community. And, you know, I, I was watching the news and I was asking the questions that I'm sure you guys were asking. Will these vaccines come through and stuff like that? I would encourage you folks, whatever we have to do as a school district. Whether we. Open fully, whether we do something in the middle or whether we stay virtual, I would say that. I would love to see. The school board, the school district and every school building work together to. To. To bring forward that community feeling, that family feeling that so many of our children. Can get from being in person. But also should be getting and should be learning more about right now. So thank you guys for your time. And you guys have a good night.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds. We appreciate you being here and providing that update. Next, we will move back and go to. I'm sorry, approval of the previous meeting minutes from January 11, 2021. I will accept a motion to accept those or amend those minutes now.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's been properly moved by Mrs. McKittrick to accept the meeting minutes and second it by Mr. Bravo. Any comments or concerns? Mr. Pillington, roll call please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield? Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we will move on to personnel recommendations and. Yeah, personnel recommendations by our superintendent, so Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wish to recommend approval of the Personnel Recommendations presented in Categories 5 through 16.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Personnel recommendations were moved to be accepted by Mr. Bravo, seconded by Mrs. McKittrick. Comments or concerns?
This is Ms. Autry. I do have a, a comment.
Okay, we're gonna go with Ms. Mansfield first. She raised her hand first. Sorry. And then we'll go to you, Ms. Autry next.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I don't know who was first there, but whichever. I had a question about the new. Jobs that are created in this one. And there was some question, I know we got an email today regarding who can apply for those. Can you tell us, are those only external con? People who can apply or can anyone who's also within the district apply? Could you just clarify that for us, Dr. James?
Is it the Family and Community Engagement Manager?
I think it was the, yeah.
That one in the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Learning Specialist.
Yeah, those, to my knowledge, are, those are open positions, so internal, external.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mansfield. Ms. Autry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, my question was related to those same items, 5.6, 5.7, 5.8. I was just wondering, just for the sake of the public and, and those listening. If, if we could just tell a little bit about those three new positions, what they are.
Sure, so the. College and Career Academy, Middle School. Partner Liaison, that one, if you remember in the Dear Board Member Letter. We're establishing that to work with our Middle School College and Career Academy Programs and that's gonna be housed at the Akron Community Foundation. And so again, that's open to anyone and that's really lining up as we've done with our high schools. That's a position which. Is the main partner manager for each of the middle schools in terms of their partnerships. Among our philanthropic and nonprofit community in Akron, because that's a focus of our. Middle School College and Career Academy Program. In terms of the Learning Specialists for Diversity Equity and Inclusion. You know, with the start of the Diversity Committee with the board and then the strategy of really moving. You know, toward establishing an executive level. A position for diversity, equity, inclusion. We also have to provide the support, so we're. Proposing this position be established to provide that support. We'll have, we're working on the Director or Executive Director of Diversity. So that will be coming at an upcoming board meeting. This one will primarily be in the learning, in the curriculum and instruction area, just making sure that as we look through all the. Topic areas of our curriculum that we're addressing diversity, equity and inclusion issues as well. And then the same goes for family and community engagement. Are, as we move some, you know, positions around, we really, as Mr. Reynolds just talked about, that's all part of this issue of really drilling down. Into how we can improve our relationships with our community through that family engagement. Now that we have. The Family Resource Centers in our buildings and want to expand that with our partnership with United Way. It's gonna be real important that we do, you know, refocus on that task in the district and this will be part of it.
Thank you. The comment, so we're, because we're expanding some of the responsibilities. Of our Community Relations Department. These positions are gonna also help in that area as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Alexander?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have a question in reference to the same area. We had some emails as mentioned that came to us in question in reference to the. Leaders of Support and Services Positions. These positions will not affect those people in any kind of way, will it? Because I know they're concerned that it's a possibility that that can affect their jobs and they, their jobs and maybe they would not have their, their positions.
No, that came up in scrimmage today. If there's any changes, we're not looking at laying off people to make room. Some of these are granted for a year. For instance, the one that will be housed at the Akron Community Foundation and then the two grants that we receive from. Both the Hewlett and the CZI, which Dr. McWilliams or no Woods will know more about that I do. Some of those funds will support either the work or, and or the position.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions, comments and concerns? Accepting a motion to approve.
Second.
Has been properly approved by Ms. Autry, or sorry, has been properly moved by Ms. Autry. To accept the personnel recommendations and seconded by Mrs. McKittrick. Mr. Pillington, roll call please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes. He's trying to hold you.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pillington. Next, we have resolutions and motions on the consent agenda, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in Category 21.
So moved. Second.
Thank you very much. That's been properly moved by Mrs. McKittrick and seconded by Mrs. Mansfield. Any questions, comments or concerns? I see Mrs. Mansfield.
Just wanted to mention again, I know we've talked about this briefly, but this is an acceptance of the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative Grant. This is a national grant. This is a pretty big deal for us to be recognized as a district and be able to receive this. We'll have a few more details in Instructional Policy, but couldn't let it go by without pointing that out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Mansfield, anyone else? Any other questions, comments or concerns? Okay, hearing none. Roll call please, Mr. Pillington.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar? Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Business Affairs Recommendations. We will turn that over to Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, Mr. President, and I wish to recommend approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in Category 23.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. It's been properly moved by Mrs. McKittrick and seconded by Mr. Alexander to accept the motions. And resolutions and the, I'm sorry, the motions in the Business Affairs Recommendations. Comments or concerns?
I do have a question, Ms. Autry.
Ms. Autry.
Regarding item 23.12 with the hometown ticketing. So I guess my question is, so does that mean there's no at-the-door sales at all for? This program or? I'm wondering how that works.
Right, so they're looking at going to, you know, a mobile or online ticket and. Many of our sister districts in the county and the region that we compete against also use the same service.
I guess I'm wondering, is it, so you're saying there's like no folks who show up at the door anymore? Everyone would have to purchase electronically? And then do we have like a computer that'll be on site for people who show up? Who might wanna?
Yeah, if they would be able to use, you know, just their cell phone to purchase a ticket.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else? Any other questions, comments or concerns? None? Roll call please, Ms. Pillington.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Thank you.
Next, we will move to Superintendent's Report. Dr. James?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know getting back to a couple of. Abigail Kern's questions, you know, just in terms of the hybrid plan. Of course, you know, with the vaccine and looking at how, you know, for us, because we're in our last quarter of the year. We really wanna focus on getting back to the total in-person. Piece for our students, because I'm looking at it more as a transition to what I think we're gonna need over the summer. To help combat some learning loss and really I feel for our teachers to work with our kids. If everything works out on the other end of this, it can help us identify what some of their shortfalls will be and then pick those students that need that help. And really develop a program over the summer. So I think it's gonna behoove us to really focus on. Getting to the 100% in-person learning. Then getting to the vaccine, which is another, another issue. So I actually have to make a call after the board meeting because someone from the state Capitol reached out. For some information from us. So right now, again, the plan is to have. Some of the COVID vaccines designated to, to schools in Ohio. Last week, all the districts. Had to work with their Educational Service Center. We belong to the Northeast Ohio Educational Service Center. So we filled out. So we filled out, um, you know, our desire to get the vaccine. The Ohio Department of Health has appointed a partner for all the districts. So virtually all the districts in Summit County, um, we, our partner is Discount Drug Mart. And that means they're gonna be the ones who get the vaccines that are suicide for us. But there are a lot of details that have to be worked out with that. And we're trying to work through how that's gonna work for Akron, along with the other, uh, sixteen districts in the county. And so we're looking at some additional partners because I feel we're gonna need them. I want to get our people vaccinated, uh, as quickly as possible. Um, and I was on a call today with the Ohio Department of Education talking about it. So right now, um, you know, they're encouraging all the districts, sign up with the ESC, accept the partner, and then they'll work out some of those additional details. What I heard today is that as early, uh, as next week, there could be some vaccines that get targeted. But again, it's still early this week and a lot of that can change. We were told to be flexible. So I'm gonna, uh, you know, I'll be working the phones a little bit later on, trying to get whatever information I can and then, uh, pass that along. I know there were some questions from parents and we're, um, Ellen will be talking about, um, and updating on where we are with some of those plans. But, um, I know some parents were concerned about whether all teachers will get the vaccine. And if they don't, what should they do? Well, you have to remember that even if we get the vaccine and our staff get both doses, kids are gonna be in the classrooms and we're back to full instruction. Kids are gonna be in classrooms with a bunch of other kids that don't have the vaccine because it, right now, it's not available for kids, you know, for our students. So that's one thing people need to remember, that while staff, you know, the vaccine is really targeted, um, for the one we're getting for eighteen and over, um, you know, for this staff in the community in terms of how that's being rolled out in our educators. Um, to my knowledge, there's nothing yet available for students, for kids. And so that's one thing I think parents need to understand. Um, I'd like, uh, Ellen to talk about the, um, surveys that we have going out and then some of the tools that we posted, uh, to our website and the information that we're seeking from our parents.
Thank you, uh, Dr. James. So we, our timeline right now is we released a family input survey, uh, this morning, actually, and we already have about three thousand five hundred responses that have come in. Our families are incredibly quick and responsive, which is wonderful. Um, but we're doing a two-phased approach to lead up to the return in, uh, sometime in March, depending on that vaccine distribution that Dr. James just was referring to. So the first survey, um, which is an input survey, is just to gauge from families where they're leaning right now, so that we can see what percentage is thinking one hundred, staying one hundred percent remote and what percentage is, uh, leaning towards sending their students back to that full-time in-person. Um, based on that data, then, our, our reopening team, that's our shared leadership team that has been working since the summer, we will look at that data to then determine that final plan of what this is gonna look like in March in terms of how we're going to accommodate whatever the percentages for the hundred percent remote students and what the, how we're going to do the, um, educating students who want to come in person. We'll give all those details. It was hard to put out that information on our website until we got a sense. Is this gonna be half of our families? Is it gonna be sixty percent want in-person, seventy percent in-person? So we're getting the pulse first. Then we'll push out information on our website about the two choices. And then, uh, it'll be mid-February, it'll probably be right around February ninth. We will put out a final selection form that families will then fill out, will, will post all the information that week on our website. Um, and then they'll fill out a form that will designate their, their final decision on whether they want to stay a hundred percent remote or whether they want to return in-person. Um, so that's the basic flow. On our website right now, I'd like to just, uh, take an opportunity to show, um, everyone where this is on our website. This is our regular Akron Public Schools website. And on our Learning Twenty Twenty-One site, the family survey is right here in the middle. So it's just two clicks, you go to our regular website and then you click on the Learning Twenty Twenty-One tile. And that's where we always have all of our information about what the current school model is and what's happening. Uh, the superintendent has a letter here that explains about the input survey. It will be up all week, um, for families to fill out. And then if you go down further on the website, there are two sections. One explains what we, uh, what that a hundred percent remote would look like. And the other is the full-time in-person. That has all the safety information. Um, there's a video that shows the safety protocols. You all have seen that and we've updated that video to post on the website as well. So parents can get additional information. But again, the survey this week is just to get a pulse of where they are, where they're leaning toward. Uh, and then we'll use that information the next two weeks to put final communication up on the website before they actually make their final selection. This survey is being pushed out through social media, through principals, um, doing all calls home. It's going out in probably ten to fifteen different ways. Uh, and the principals will continue to communicate with families all this week to have them fill that out. Any questions just about the, uh, family survey and this process?
Thank you, um, Dr. McWilliams was, we do have one question so far. Uh, anyone else want to line up in the chat if they have any questions about?
Dr. Hall? Oh, thank you. Um, so, uh, yeah, so I, I just wanted to ask quickly, one of the questions I'm gonna ask via email the other day. Um, it was if, if parents elect to go with one option or the other, so let's say they like to go one hundred percent remote, and then they change their mind and want to come back in person or vice versa, um, uh, will they be allowed to do that? And that, uh, is that, is that being contemplated in the plan?
Yeah, we are discussing that right now. And once we see the numbers on this initial input survey, we'll make that final determination and, uh, recommendation. Right now, um, it'll be harder to go from remote to in-person just because of the staffing requirements, that if we saw a big swing just this last quarter, we may not be able to accommodate staffing within the class size with social distance, you know, all those factors. Um, but we want to make sure that we see what the breakdown of the numbers are first before we, uh, post that. But that, that's the number one question and we will put that on our website, uh, to make sure that everyone has that answer before they fill out the survey, the final selection form.
So do I get like extra credit points for being the first person to ask that, that question? I should get credit for that somewhere. Keep, keep, on a ledger, like this price, I get five hundred dollars for like, you know, in my, in my APS account for, uh, I'm, I'm kidding about the dollar amount.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, but no, I was gonna say, I, I take your point. I mean, I agree with you. I think that going remote to in-classroom, you know, obviously, you know, I think that, um, you know, you know, just, just my personal thing. I think we'd be well within, um, our, you know, our rights from a, from a staffing, safety standpoint is they listen, like if you're gonna go remote, you, you probably, you're probably gonna need to say remote, uh, you know, you know, some, some, um, some, some, you know, disparate or untoward circumstance notwithstanding, right? Um, you know, so.
Right.
Uh, cause again, yeah, cause, cause that's what I'm saying, like, gosh, like if we have a bunch of folks that are remote and then decide, oh, well, the in-person is not going too bad. I, I think I'm gonna switch and go, and go in-person now too. You know, I could see that sort of wreaking havoc, um, you know, with our social protocols and staffing and all that. So, uh, and again, it may be a moot point, but I, I at least wanted to raise it for discussion tonight. Thank you.
And our original, uh, design back in the summertime, when we were planning for remote, the rule back then was you can only make a change at the quarter, like once the quarter ends. Well, we're in the last quarter. So if we applied that same rule, we would have to make it through the end of the year.
Thank you very much. Sorry, Ms. Mansfield, sorry.
That's all right, I wasn't gonna interrupt you. So, um, uh, first of all, I wanted to compliment, um, the responsiveness on having two surveys. I think that it's an excellent way to do it. I know there was a lot of panic last time. If I'd only known this, if I'd only known that. And this is giving folks that opportunity to kind of rest in the decision that they, they think they're most comfortable with. So I really thank you all for that very much. Um, I know we talked about this in instructional policy. I just want, um, to point this out, but every, we've been assured that every effort is going to be made to, to maintain those relationships between classmates, teachers that have long been established this year with all of the hard work our staff has done to reach across virtual lines to make that happen, to drop things off at people's houses. And we're not throwing that out here in as many ways as we can. And just give you an opportunity to maybe talk about that. But also just remembering that in this case, we're not willing to sacrifice the good for the perfect. And we would love to be able to perfectly assign everyone and, and have it, everyone get to stay with the right, you know, with the person that they want to be with. But, um, in this situation, we may, i- it's gonna be, it's gonna be a, a incredible puzzle. Can you just talk about that a little bit?
Sure, I, I think exactly what you said, uh, reinforces why it was so important for us to pause and, and decide to do this in two phases where we could get that input first. Because making a decision on how we staff the remote students and how we staff, uh, the, the in-person students makes a big difference. If it's gonna be ninety percent of the families are gonna choose to come back in person and it's only one or two kids per class that are remote, that's a very different scenario than if it turns out to be fifty-fifty. And if we have fifty percent of our students remote and fifty percent. Um, so we really, uh, felt as though, just as families felt like it was gonna be such a difficult decision to make a final decision now without having more information, we felt like we needed the family information to be able to really help communicate what this is gonna look like. Um, so it is, you know, we've put on the website under both the hundred percent remote information to kind of dig a little deeper into that and the in-person tile with more information. We put a line underneath both of those that says, both options may result in a teacher change or a schedule change. Cause at this point, no matter what we do, it, we could end up with some changes needed uh, because some of our faculty have medical exemptions, that they won't be able to come back in-person. And, uh, depending on the percentage of families that pick remote, that may end up having to have some teacher changes. But, uh, just like you said, our goal is to have the minimum number of changes possible because especially when you're going into the last quarter of school, you don't want to have, uh, big disruptions in schedules. So that's the lens and our shared leadership team, um, with Ms. Shipe and myself and a team of teachers and principals, we're working through that as we speak and just waiting for this week to see these results.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other board member have any questions? Okay, um, we do have one final question from Dr. Hall and then we will move back to Dr. James and the rest is report.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Um, I, I would be remiss without, uh, without having asked this question. Um, uh, there have been some parents who've reached out that have, um, a- and, and while I recognize that, that a lot of, that there are students who are really struggling with this online environment, there are those who have, in fact, discovered themselves, um, as a result of this, uh, of, of remote learning. Um, and so, so some parents have reached out and, and, and have asked a question. You know, gosh, my kid has just done so much better without the distractions of traditional school, right? You know, whether it was kids who felt they were being picked on in school or, um, you know, I, they're, 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 some, 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 some special ed kids who, parents who reached out that they've, they felt their student was doing better. Um, you know, without the, you know, without, without being in, in school environment, which caused them more anxiety. Um, and their, their big concern was, you know, not only would they be able to remain remote for this year, but, but have we begun to think about next academic year, with this summer, next academic year, about, about offering a permanent remote option for students who would like to do that? And so I know that, you know, that, that we're not, that we won't solve that tonight. Um, I just wanted to socialize it and share it with this, with, with you all. And that there are, um, I think a significant number of students who, um, may want, and their families who may want to remain remote moving forward for, for any number of reasons. So I just, you know, it, you know, so if you would like to comment on that, I, I'd love to hear that. And again, recognizing that that's not anything that we're deciding tonight, but just wanted to share it and get your comments. Thank you.
Sure, uh, you know, I've said in staff meetings that, you know, never, you know, take, w- when we're in a crisis situation, take the opportunity to learn from it and then determine what our next practice is. I mean, best practice is okay, but, you know, in this situation, we need to develop our next practice. And we have had those discussions about what will our classrooms look like moving forward? You know, because historically, what we thought is, okay, we need to have a separate teacher to do online and then the one who does in-person, well, maybe moving forward, do classrooms look different? And then what are the technology needs for that? Because we may have a teacher who will have, you know, maybe eighty percent of the classes in-person. Maybe twenty percent of the class is online and pipes in every day. And instead of trying to set up separate infrastructures, what if we could just make that one coherent approach? And that, you know, we can then differentiate students' needs. And then the other thing I thought about the other day is what about maybe elective courses that, you know, we may have only fifteen students in the whole district that want to take a Latin class? Well, what if we could actually do that virtually? You know, versus, so there, we're talking about that. And I think that's something that we'll definitely need to work on. Um, you know, so we can look at what those models are. And, and we're not the only ones having that conversation. A lot of my counterparts across the highway are having the same conversations as well. What does this, how, what is this bowl for education, um, moving forward? Because you're right, there are some students who really do thrive in that, you know, virtual environment. And, you know, I don't know, a good portion of my daughter's course is at University of Akron. You know, we're virtual even before the pandemic. So it's, I think it's an opportunity for us.
Thank you very much. Um, I believe, uh, you might have one other item, uh, Dr. James.
Uh, I don't remember what it was, but I did come up as we were talking, and that is safety protocols. So regardless of if we get all of our staff or the majority of our staff vaccinated, kids and staff members will still have to wear masks, will still, you know, have the sanitation. All the things that Mrs. Folk showed in the video will still be part of, you know, operating our schools for in-person learning. So none of that's gonna go away. That'll still be with us until, you know, more people, and, and when they get down to more of the general public get vaccinated and we move, you know, we move past this. So I just wanted to be clear, you know, for folks in the community, that we're still gonna be doing, you know, those safety practices in the building.
Thank you very much. Any final questions for, uh, Dr. James? Moving on, uh, to President's report. So, um, first I want to thank everyone for, um, So, um, first I want to thank everyone for, um, just everything they've done in the last two weeks. I know we've all been receiving a lot, a lot has gone on, um, with, with just engagement uh, from the community. So I wanted to share just some brief um, highlights of some things that we have going on. Uh, the first thing I want to highlight is the formative evaluation, uh, timeline. It is time now for us to do that. I will be sending an email out, uh, after this meeting with information about that. Um, we have, uh, Ryan's, uh, formative evaluation coming up soon, which, uh, you'll get information on in, in the email. And then I've also, uh, spoke with Dr. James about waiving his, uh, final formative evaluation. Um, and he shared that if that was the will of the board, so, but unless there's any objections, we'll, we'll waive, uh, Dr. James' uh, final, uh, formative evaluation. If you have any objections to that, feel free, uh, to share it. Just send me an email, uh, by the end of this week. Um, otherwise we'll consider his evaluation waived. Any questions about that? Moving to the next point, which is, uh, I worked with, uh, we have the superintendent search, uh, as everyone know, I worked with, uh, Mark Williamson to, uh, develop an advanced APS document that's being used for, um, the superintendent search, but also used for external audiences as well. I know Ms. Mansfield, uh, mentioned that there may be a need to create another type of document for our external audiences, which I think that's something we definitely can, uh, explore and work with Mark, uh, Williamson to, uh, make that happen, um, if, if we need to. So, um, other than that, uh, the superintendent search is still open for another month. And I thought it was important that we added a piece on the website for everyone to, um, go and find out information and updates for. So that is listed there. Uh, again, thankful, uh, to Mr. Williamson and his team for, uh, providing those updates there. And, uh, we will provide updates to the community as we reach each milestone. Uh, and so that will be posted on the website as well as, uh, we will send out, uh, um, an email, um, information out to all staff. We feel like, uh, making sure that everyone's informed of the process as we go along is very important. Questions about, um, what we've done in the last two weeks about that? The process we're going to follow about communicating with staffing in the community. Um, moving on to the, uh, next item that I have, uh, I want to encourage each board member now that we have our new clusters, um, and wards to reach out to those, uh, city council members, uh, for the wards to begin that communication with them. Uh, and then also reach out to the student board members. Dreama, uh, sent us, I'm sorry, Ms. Whitfield, sent us a email with, uh, instructions on how to do that, how to reach out to student board members. Um, think that most of us, uh, change clusters, so that will be good for us to reach out to our new, um, student board member, just as we received from Abigail today, um, a list of questions that she received from her student, uh, colleagues and peers. I think it'll be good to hear what are some of the other questions that our students are hearing in their schools. Um, so we can do that, uh, within the next two weeks, at least to make that initial contact. That would be great. Uh, which leads me to, um, another point, which I did have a conversation with, uh, City Council President, uh, Margot Somerville, and we are looking, um, sometime possibly in March, uh, to have a joint, uh, APS and city council meeting. Um, Dr. Hall and I will meet with the city council leadership next month and report back to each of you about, um, what our plan is for the format as well as agenda items. If you have ideas about that, please share that with myself or Dr. Hall as we have not scheduled that meeting yet. Um, so it is forthcoming and we still have time to, uh, talk and discuss how that might, um, operate. Wait, I'm sorry. Are there any questions about those items that I shared just now? Other small buckets, um, one is, uh, we have, uh, we are going to, I'm asking and announcing that, uh, the board will, um, form an ad hoc committee on communication and engagement. Uh, this committee will explore the formats, forums and audiences, uh, that we could utilize to better reach stakeholders and families and students who we have difficulty, um, reaching. Uh, I've, I've had a conversation with Dr. James about this and figuring out how can we best utilize new communication tools, um, and platforms to better, um, communicate out to our families and stakeholders. Um, and so that's something we're going to pull together, hopefully a small committee of 15 to 18 people where it will be co-chaired by, um, a board member, a community member, as well as an administrative, uh, member. And so I've asked, uh, Ms. Autry to represent the board by chairing, uh, this committee. We will be meeting with Dr. James and sometimes in the next week or two to discuss, um, the goals of the committee and who on the administration would chair. And we're also exploring, uh, some possible community members, uh, to sit on the committee and then also co-chair as well. So if you have any ideas about that, please share that with me, um, as we hope, uh, by the next board meeting to give you at least an initial report on the direction that the ad hoc committee will take. Any questions about that? All right. So the final thing that I have for the President's report is, uh, professional development. So the board will embark professional development series, uh, starting soon. Uh, we're seeking to have a potential, uh, contract uh, for this series, uh, that we're working to develop, um, uh, before the board for approval in the next two weeks. Um, and so at the next meeting, uh, we're looking to focus this series on leadership development, communication and managing difficult decisions as we have, uh, faced all of those things in the last year at least. And I feel that with all of us, uh, being, uh, you know, thrust into the pandemic and making decisions as well as leading together, um, that it will be good for us to, uh, professional development series, uh, to work through that. We'll have an external um, consultant working with us. Uh, and there's more to come on this, but the goal of this is to have these done um, in small groups, um, and then, uh, have a in-person, um, board retreat. And eating, um, for this, uh, series, um, and that retreat, I'm hoping, um, will be at the end of March, uh, beginning of April, which would give us time, um, if, you know, all of the spirits are in the good, in, in our, in our favor for us to be a part of the vaccination, uh, prioritization for, uh, APS. And this will allow us to possibly at least have some meetings in person. Um, I have plan on having a conversation with, uh, Dr. James and, um, Mr. Pendleton about how we might do that. Um, if we start meeting in person, we would still be, uh, physically distanced um, and possibly still live streaming and not be open to the public, but at least give us an opportunity as a board to begin meeting, uh, face to face, even, um, as we are distanced. So, uh, again, that will be after the vaccine, um, is, uh, all of us. And if anyone has a question, comment or challenge with, uh, that possible process, feel free to share your thoughts with me. Um, I'm definitely not wedded to that process, but I thought, um, as, uh, Mr. Patrick Bravo actually mentioned earlier, um, in this meeting, that that should be a road that we try to head towards, even if we don't, um, bring the full public back in person, at least we as a board can begin to meet in public. Um, and so that is, uh, the first part of professional development that I had. Is there any questions about that since that was a little lengthy? Um, Mrs. Mansfield?
Just have a quick question about the communications, um, committee is, will other board members be invited to attend that as well? That Ms. Autry is, is, um, is heading. I do work in community outreach and marketing and things like that. Um, I would love to help.
Thank you very much for sharing that. No board member will be restricted from the committee. Uh, we would like it to not be majority of the board. So, Mrs. Mansfield, you would like to be on that committee. I'm sure, uh, Ms. Autry won't oppose that. Um, and as long as we don't have more than one other person, uh, join, I think we should be fine. And the reason for that, just for anybody who's watching is then it goes to open meetings, uh, and us being having to, uh, this, uh, the meet, all the meetings, um, and some of our community partners and, and, uh, even parents who may be involved may not want, um, necessarily all of the meetings to be, uh, live streamed and go through that process. So we want to at least, the whole purpose is to be able to have some of those difficult conversations around, how do we reach people? And also how do we do a better job of, um, communicating, uh, with people? So we might have to have some difficult conversations. A little more difficult to, uh, live stream. And I did see your comment, uh, Mr. Bravo. Yes. Will be open, um, anyways, because it's, uh, as a committee of the board. So, um, that is any questions about the, um, professional development, which is what I was asking, uh, about. If I just want to make sure I got back on my, uh, table. Okay. So there's no questions about, uh, that. I did want to move on to two other, uh, professional development opportunities that we have. I really feel as though we have an opportunity, uh, to, uh, invest in our development as we, uh, I believe owe it to our community to continue to, uh, look at ways we can develop. And so two other opportunities, uh, came up and one of them is, uh, Leadership Akron, uh, which, uh, if there's anyone on this call interested at some point soon, I think in March will, uh, open up. And so, uh, we want to have a board representative, uh, on Leadership Akron. Um, and following in, uh, the footsteps of Mr. Bravo, Ms. Alexander and Mrs. Mansfield, who have all, um, I'm sure they will represent their classes proudly, um, if, if they had an opportunity to talk about that their class was the best. Um, and I believe, uh, Mr. Alexander was the last board member to, um, Leadership Akron. Um, and yes, I see.
It's the best class ever. So don't worry about it.
Yeah, that's not according to, uh, Mr. Bravo of the chat there. So, uh, so, uh, we will be doing that. So if you're interested, um, and Dr. McWilliams was chimed in and apparently number 26 was the best. So, um, but yes, we, it's a great opportunity for us to be able to, uh, meet different community leaders across, uh, this city in this region, as well as an opportunity to develop, um, ourselves as board members, uh, to best serve our community and our students. So if you're interested, let me know. I work with Dr. James and, uh, Mr. Pendleton, uh, to work that process out, um, once I know who's all, uh, interested. And we would like to know this, uh, by the end of next week, if possible, so we can start that process. So meeting, if you can let me know. And then the last thing, um, uh, this is awesome. We've had some outstanding staff members who apparently went through Leadership Akron at different points. Um, and so the next thing is Heart to Heart, um, which is a, a professional development training opportunity for us. That they did send an email to a few of our board members. Dr. Hall has responded. Um, and so wanted to see if there's any, um, discussion about our participation in the Heart to Heart Professional Development, which is a six series, uh, professional development, um, cohort. I don't see any comments. Um, and yes, so Mrs. Uh, Mansfield mentioned that, uh, NSBA and OSBA have some, uh, professional development trainings as well. I know OSBA provides, uh, a weekly Wednesday training, um, webinar series, uh, that we can all take advantage of as well. We have a great opportunity, uh, to, to pursue, uh, um, sessions and opportunities here. So just wanted to put that out there and make the, make sure that's something um, at the top of our mind as we look forward for our goals for this year. Okay.
I'd like to just make a comment. I think with, uh, uh, OSBA and NSBA, I think everyone should get involved when, if they can and whenever they have time or their, their schedules permit. I think it's a good opportunity where you can learn not just what goes on uh, around here or locally, but you can also know what's going on across the state. You can talk with board members who are from across the state and you can talk to those across the country. And you can learn a lot by being in sessions, but not just in being in sessions, but being around other board members from across the, across the country, uh, and across the state. So I would say to anybody who gets a chance to participate knows that I think you should participate in them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Alexander. Uh, well said. So, uh, that's the end of my report. Uh, thank you everyone for your questions. Feel free to contact me afterwards as well. And I will send you an email, uh, about the evaluations after this meeting. Moving on to Treasurers Report, Mr. Pendleton, this is, uh, time for the fun stuff.
Good evening. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. President. Uh, let me go to, hopefully you're all seeing, um, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund Act. Three items tonight I'd like to update you on briefly. The first is on the ESER 1.0 and 2.0. Uh, the second is budget season, uh, to add to our plate already. We've got to start preparing for budgets for the 21, 22 school year. And third, on the operations front, we have, uh, post audit that's going to be scheduled here at the end of February, early March for both the IT and financial. All right. First item is ESER 1.0. As you know, we were awarded about $10 million and through our finance committee, through our staffing, uh, union representatives, we did a very good job of developing a plan. Uh, it was very academically focused, albeit that was not specifically written into the, um, the guidance on the left-hand side column. So of the 10 plus million dollars on the ESER funds, you know that it had some non-public transfer dollars that we had to account for to the tune of about 1.2 million. And, uh, kudos to our staff for managing and doing outreach on those funds and transfers. Uh, to date, as reported to the finance committee last week, we have spent about 60% of those funds and anticipate spending all of those funds before the end of the school year. And obviously that's been a great, uh, assistance to the district, uh, to help develop plans, especially moving forward to an in-person learning environment. As I communicated to you this weekend, we did receive our second, uh, round ESER 2 fund that was passed in December by the federal government. That allocation is quite a bit larger. And as reported in the newspaper and by our estimates, that dollar amount now is officially coming out at $42.77 million. And those funds, as you're looking at the screen on the right side, are now available for our use through September 30th of 2023. Uh, it's probably good to touch on the values, uh, the It's probably good to touch on the values, the transparency and the use of those funds in showing that, not just talking the talk, but showing that to the community through our actions. And as you know, we were lined up and very much by the book, we could have been on the ballot in November of 2020 and had predicted some deficit spend. The board actively managed that scenario, actively managed ESER first round ESER funds has improved the financial scenario for both last fiscal year and this fiscal year. And will do the same thing with the second round ESER funds. And so when we begin to build the budgets and we begin to look at the next few months, building up to the May forecast, we need a constant monitoring. A constant monitoring needs to be done at the board level, starting at the next board meeting. We need to give you an indication in the finance reports. If you notice, the finance report was a little bit shy this month. It's we're definitely in a transition. We need to start accounting for some of this 42.8, what the recovery program looks like. And on that note, in the guidance, under the use of funds, you look to the right side of the screen, it says the same as the original. However, the additional language that the Local Education Association allowable uses should be addressing learning loss, preparing schools for reopening, testing, repairing and upgrading projects to improve air quality. So it's the first time they threw in some capital components to this. So just as broad-based as the spending guidance was before, a little bit more focused here, but still able to use those funds as the district sees fit. So through constant monitoring, through the budget season, adding to our list of responsibilities and lining up to May, we've got a lot of work to do. But also some good news is the CRRA, so Second Round ESER Funds did not have an equitable services component. So the 42.8 million is Akron Public Schools allocation. Right, as I stop sharing and I'll pause there. If there's any questions on ESER funds, I can take those. Otherwise, I did say that adding to our priority list is budget season. This is the time where staff, superintendent myself, and ultimately the board and Board Finance Committee start to build the budgets for next school year. That process actually starts with the tax budget or the organizational meeting. That's how long of a runway we work towards July 1. This budget's going to be tough. It's going to be tough to estimate how those $42.8 million are used over what period of time, what in-person learning looks like, what additional expenses, as the superintendent concluded his report with the additional expenses that we will have. So we'll pay close attention to that. And then the third and final item is post audit. Post audit, although the word audit carries sometimes a negative connotation, this is really a great time for our community to be involved. And a little known fact on post audit, because of the size and scope of an Akron Public Schools, we're audited in both the operational side of the equation, our ITC or data acquisition site. So we house that under Howard Lawson's department. So our network and infrastructure has a separate audit. We'll report those to you. And then our financial audit should be coming to a close. And with all these additional ESER funds, I think the community should look forward to and appreciate that the state agency, the auditor of state is coming in, taking a deep dive look at all those additional spending and infrastructure, safety and security and focus on transparency. So with that, I conclude my report and can answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pendleton. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. I just wanted to say your funds that you reported on, I think that was the first thing you talked about. How basically it is amazing opportunity for us to focus on that learning loss, but then also a good opportunity for us to think about how do we be creative as the district? So I'm really excited to hear just initial conversations with Dr. James and Dr. McWilliams Woods. What are some of the things that they're thinking about? And the third semester, for example, to me is a great opportunity for us to, and I know they'll share more information with us soon, but it won't, just want to just make this statement and this declaration as I think Ryan did a great job, but it, you know, as he said, it won't deter us from coming be in the future. It may have delayed the ask, but it's definitely pending. We do understand and know that some people are hurting in our community right now. The pandemic has ravaged some in ways unimaginable and others, it may not have had as much of an effect. So the the good thing with this news is that it at least delays that decision for the board and to even have to go before the community in such a time where people are hurting. So we appreciate you reporting that. And I just want to appreciate the funding for allowing us to have this opportunity to our district and our families. Other questions or comments? I don't think I saw any. I just wanted to ask one last time. Okay, moving on. Thank you very much. We have a committee reports. We're going to start with Mr. Alexander for Legal Contracts and Board Policy Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. The Legal Contracts and Policy Committee met January 13, 2000, I'm sorry, 2021. Those who were present was Dr. Akbar, Dr. James, Mr. Pendleton, Ms. McVeigh and myself. And we had some unfinished business, which is what we basically talked about. And the unfinished business was a proposed racial equity policy. And Dr. James presented the policy and it suggested that certain language pertaining to sections of the equity policy and regarding student discipline be removed and placed in a separate document to resolve and the issues and so we can move forward with the policy. And also they can be addressed in discipline and student code of behavior. Excuse me. Dr. James indicated that we would create a separate document that will highlight the language to be be removed so that we can, we don't forget it and so that we can inform other work, either revising or current discipline policies or working out issues and putting it back, putting it back to racial equity, putting it back into the racial equity policy. Also, Mr. Pendleton reported that the Finance Committee will begin their work next week, which was the last week. The pieces for the Forecast Five to see the reporting metrics that are needed to reach the goals and slate the proposed racial equity policy. He indicated that help with the tech department, that they will be able to meet all the areas they needed for the dashboard and in building some of the templates necessary for reporting. We also did bylaws 0155 committees and Mr. Pendleton presented the bylaws for the second reading. The committee recommended that the bylaws be moved for the third reading and final approval for this meeting today. And finally, we discussed Administrative Guidelines 7250, Commemoration of School Facilities. Dr. James presented changes in the administrative guidelines that were suggested at the December 7, 2020 meeting. The committee agreed with the changes and Dr. James indicated that the administrative guidelines will be moved to the next meeting for review as well. And then the meeting, we have for this evening, a couple of policies that we need to vote on. We have for the third and final reading and request for approval, revise bylaws 0155 committees. And we have the APS Racial Equity Policy. And we have following administrative guidelines for approval, Administrative Guidelines 7250 to support the policy 7250, Commemoration of School Facilities. These are read for the third and final reading. We ask, request a motion to accept them as read. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Entertained a motion to approve the third and final reading. Those three items that Mrs. Alexander mentioned.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. McKittrick and seconded by Ms. Autry to approve the racial equity. I'm sorry, we probably should do those individually, right? I'm sorry. I think I did it all the same. So I'm going to actually retract what I said and say it properly. So the first up is the racial equity policy, I believe, from Mr. Alexander. I will entertain a motion to approve. Let's see.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved by Mrs. McKittrick and seconded by Ms. Autry. All those, I'm sorry, any questions, comments or concerns about the racial equity policy? Hearing none. Mr. Pendleton, roll call, please.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Want to thank Mr. Alexander for his work on that policy. Moving on to the second piece, which is the third final reading of the Administrative Guidelines, I believe. I'm sorry, revised bylaws 0155. That's this third and final reading for that will entertain a motion to approve bylaw 0155.
So moved.
Second.
Is probably moved by Mrs. McKittrick, seconded by Mr. Alexander to approve the revised bylaws 0155 on committees. Any questions, comments or concerns? Hearing none. Mr. Pendleton, roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar? Yes. Mr. Alexander? Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Yes.
Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we are going to move to the third and final reading of the Administrative Guidelines, which supplement the December 7 approved commemoration, December 14th, I'm sorry, approved commemoration of school facilities. So this will supplement that. We will entertain a motion to approve the Administrative Guidelines.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. McKittrick, seconded by Mr. Alexander to approve the Administrative Guidelines for Commemoration of School Facilities. Any questions, comments or concerns? Hearing none, we will move to the vote. Mr. Pendleton, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Finance and Capital Management Committee. I believe that is Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Ms. Autry, let it.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. So on January 19, the Finance Committee met with the following members present, Dr. Akbar, myself, Patrick Bravo, Dr. Hall, Val McKittrick, Dr. James, Ryan Pendleton. So as Mr. Pendleton already mentioned, we did discuss the ESER 2.0 funds. At the time, we did not have the allocation. So again, just reiterating that we are grateful and thankful to have that. And just also piggybacking on what our president stated, this in no way deters a levy and I want to make sure that the need for a levy stays in the forefront of all of our minds and understanding that the challenges that we all have had during this pandemic across the country, I think is very important that we remember what our values are. And I would say education would have to be at the top of our lists. And you know, for any criticism that anyone might have about Akron Public Schools, I would challenge you to look deeply into what this district has provided and in the way that it has been provided throughout this unprecedented time. I know we're tired of that word, but just keeping that in mind. Because when the time comes to pass a levy, I think it's important that we remember our values and the value of this district. So I just wanted to share that. And that as well as remind us that we recently passed a levy for the zoo. So if the zoo was important, I would say that education is equally as important. And our neighbors up north have passed the levy, Cleveland Public School District just this past November. So I'm confident that the citizens of Akron appreciate our school system here. Also, we discussed our new advocacy page, which I do not believe is live yet, but I'm very excited that that has been brought forth. It is in the works and it will be on our page and it will be accessible to the community and to our staff, giving us legislative updates at the state and federal levels. I think that will be a very important piece for us moving forward to keep our families engaged and educated about the issues. Because they're our partners and they can help get some of these issues brought to the forefront and build relationships with our legislators at the state and federal level. So I'm excited about that new advocacy page that will be going live. I'm not exactly sure if we have an estimated date yet, but it will be forthcoming in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, we covered a lot of ground at our Finance Committee meeting as usual. And I told Mrs. Autry today, Ms. Autry today, that I am a little rusty at giving these reports, but I'll do my best. I'm just going to capture some key highlights. We spent some time talking about the Equity Dashboard and Mr. Pendleton shared with us several charts that we can start to use, especially with the Forecast Five software that we have, that we can start breaking down a lot of data, especially including building level analysis and per pupil expenditures and those sorts of things. Dr. Hall suggested and mentioned that, you know, we continue to work to normalize that data so that we make sure that we're looking at apples-to-apples comparisons across the district. We spent a lot of time talking about advanced APS and how our Finance Committee, you know, in each of the sections, each of those three goals and the objectives underneath all of those, sort of an underpinning of the entire advanced APS document is the finance and operations. So we spent some time talking about how Finance and Finance Committee can can work to to support the advanced APS initiatives and hope to have some data that we can report out by the end of the first quarter 2021. And that goes along too with Financial Reporting System for the Equity-related reporting, which again, part of that dashboard that we'll be developing and sort of rolling out over time. We also looked at our most recent investment report. We talked a little bit, which we've talked about tonight as well, the ESER 2.0 funds and how that will impact the May five-year forecast and whether the district will have a need to look for a levy on the November 21 ballot or whether we've pushed that out a little bit. But as you've heard tonight, you know, it's a more of a delayed decision, not one that's completely taken off the table. We also, because of the attention around the reappraisals that have happened recently as required by statute, we spent some time talking about reappraisals and how Um, we spent some time talking about reappraisals and how, uh, the outcome of those reappraisals affects this district and our five-year forecast. And what that means. Uh, and Mr. Pendleton has also requested some additional information, uh, from, uh, the Summit County Fiscal Office. And has been working with them, information that he can share not only with this board, but with, uh, members of the public who ask. Um, and, and they have received, uh, you know, some questions and correspondence from people in the community and from the media. Uh, so he's requested some additional information and will be sharing that out, uh, as well. We also talked about the Master Facilities Plan, uh, as many of you, well, as everyone on this board knows. And, and many of the public know, we still have a number of buildings, uh, that need some attention, um, and that have not been so far part of our. Uh, they have been part of the Master Facilities Plan, but they've not necessarily, uh, been part of any of the prior segments as part of the Imagine Akron CLC project. So, uh, time to start talking about the next, uh, phases of that as we begin to look at closing out the Imagine Akron CLC project. Uh, with the state and begin closing out those segments. So, um, just something to mention there. Um, and I think that about does it for our Finance Committee Report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Autry and Mr. Bravo. Any questions for the Finance, uh, and Capital Management Committee?
I have a question. Can we, can we just clarify? I, I'm, I, I just want to help the public to understand. I'm, I'm hearing the words impending levy. Upcoming, things like that. I just want to make sure what the Finance Committee is actually talking about here, because I think that. I think we all go into this knowing the history, right? We know that every seven to nine years and that we've extended ours and things like that. So yes, it's impending, but in some of the emails that I got today, some of the questions were with the district facing a levy. Can we clarify that just a little bit? Um, impending to me sounds like the snowball's rolling at me and I'm about to get hit. Not that the snowball's, you know, somewhere near the top of the hill, and my hope and prayer is that, um, with Mr. Pendleton's help and work. We're gonna get some work done at the school finance level as well and, and, and fix some of that. There were also some things that came out today. From Governor DeWid's office regarding the budget and, um, and changing, uh, in, in making, wow. They've never made education whole, so I won't say that, but recouping some of what higher ed and K twelve. Uh, lost last year by, um, making that part solid. So can we just clarify that just a little bit? I'm just concerned about headlines and, and somebody just catching a snippet of this meeting and hearing impending.
This is Ms. Autry, and, and certainly Ryan definitely expound upon that, but what I can say for sure is it won't be on the May ballot. Because we've already missed those timeframes for that. So, so it won't be on the May ballot. I can say that much.
Yeah, and just building upon that, um, again, backing up to two thousand twenty, we were heading into a November. That, for all intents and purposes, we, we probably should have been on the ballot. And as you remember, it was a very healthy conversation amongst the board members and community about whether or not to go on. And little did we know, Esther one point O and two point O would have a substantial impact on our finances. So. Um, let me clarify the impending from my perspective. We've got a lot of work to do between now and May. And here are the points that we need to look forward as the leadership team and then the community needs to hold us accountable to. Is an academic recovery plan that knowingly has us vaccinated. That it has us back in person, that we have a good, clear picture or progress towards what summer may look for us. In terms of academic recovery, before and after school programming, additional staffing resources. So over the next few months, we need to do, um. A, a lot of work. To summarize what kind of expenses that will have on our books. So forty-two million dollar allocation is a large allocation. However, it is to last us to September of twenty twenty-three for a reason, right? It's academic recovery and we're gonna structure ourselves around that. So, uh, Mrs. Mansfield. We will have a clearer picture by the May forecast. Between May and July. We're gonna be in the midst of that in-person spend and what this academic recovery program is going to cost. And I'm sure I speak for everyone that if at all possible, we will delay. We'll delay through, uh, twenty twenty-one and into twenty twenty-two, if at all possible. But as we all know, we do that delay, and even if we pass in the next year's primary or in November, it doesn't collect until January. Of twenty twenty-three. That's a long way off. And so I, I know I didn't answer it directly as whether or not we'll be on in November or not, but these allocations came out. Uh, literally the last twenty-four hours, and we've got a lot of work to do.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that because I, I think maybe if you missed that in the last meeting or didn't notice that we didn't vote on. One for May, I think it's really easy to, uh, have that part of, have gotten buried in the excitement of possibilities. Of back to school and things like that. So I appreciate, you know, none of us have a crystal ball and none of us know exactly what's gonna happen. And of course, back to school is the highest priority, and we're gonna spend what's necessary to get students, um. To a point where, uh, you know, they need to be, again, remembering that they've just survived or will have survived. And hopefully will be on the other side of a global pandemic. So, um, that, that, there's also some wonderful, uh. A lessons learned there. So just wanted to clarify that a little bit, because I was getting confused even in myself, and I was at the last meeting. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, y- yeah, just a quick comment. I mean, to, to, to Mr. Pendleton's point, you know, um. You know, I think that the layperson may see the Esther Fund dollar amounts and say, wow, that's a lot of money. You know, um, you know, we shouldn't be asking for levy for ten more years, right? I mean, you know, if, if for folks in the layperson who doesn't understand sort of what kind of, what dollar amounts we're talking about from a budget standpoint, what it actually costs them in a school district, right? Um, you know, but just, but just contemplating, you know, as we've had conversations around. You know, what would a potential summer term look like as far as academic recovery and catch up? You know, that's gonna be very, very expensive, um, and, and, and probably eat up a significant amount of those Esther Funds. Which is what those funds are intended to be used for, right? In large part, right? So, so I agree with, so to, so to Mr. Pendleton's point, you know, um, and I think to the Finance Committee's point as, as well as, you, you know, is. Um, you know, I would be, and again, this is me expressing the viewpoints of one singular board member. But I would be very, very surprised if we were not on, if we weren't asking for a levy in November of this year. And that's just my personal, you know, one person expressing their viewpoint, right? Um, based upon having served on Finance Committee and still serving on it, I'd be surprised if we weren't. Member, because when we get to, you know, to Mr. Pendleton's point, when we get to this summer and we're looking at the actual cost of what it, of what we're looking at to. You know, finance and, and cover the cost of a summer, uh, uh, of a, of a, of a potential summer term. Yeah, chances are a large amount of those Esther Funds are gonna be eaten up and, 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 and eliminated. So, you know, it's a lot of, it might, so, you know. So we're just, you know, really sort of back to square one again. So, um, so yeah, so I, I think that people who are listening to this, you know. Um, that, you know, obviously as an organization, I know that we're always listening, listening to feedback. Um, but I think that, but in my, at least from my, from my seat, you know, I, 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 I would expect us to be asking for levy in November. Um, you know, and, um, you know, for all the reasons I just kind of laid out, and I think has been laid out. By Mr. Pendleton and the, and the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Um, if I could just add to that. Um, and just, just share a little, a little more about, uh, the, the potential levy. I, I think that the, um, the funds that we received, uh, the forty-two million and some odd dollars. Um, funds that we received will help us, but, um, let's, you know, I just want to take us back to December. Before we knew we were getting these funds, um, we still. Do some type of recovery, and, um, Dr. McWilliams Woods and Dr. James was already, were already sharing with us. A need for some type of innovative, more, uh, intensive type third semester or what have you. Uh, whatever we're gonna end up calling it, uh, to recover from the pandemic's law, learning loss. And. Additional funds that made the levy even more. And urgent, uh, because we would have had to use the existing funds that we have. This, uh, this takes care because one, one of the requirements that Mr. Pendleton mentioned was that. Uh, learning loss, uh, was one of the requirements we're using the funds. So you, we can't just use it however we want. There were limitations and guidelines on how to use it, and that was one of them. So, uh, that does. An opportunity for us to take some of that immediacy and urgency, uh, off the table. Um, but I don't know if it takes us back to square one. Um, so I just wanna make sure I just shared that. Uh, because I, I don't think we get back into that whole immediacy, urgency need right now, right away. Uh, but it does not, um, give us an opportunity to say we won't do it for another two years. That, that's unrealistic to, to believe. So, um, will it happen in November? I'm not as confident as Dr. Hall that it will be in November, but, um, will it happen within the next year and a half? I, I will say probably so. Um, and so, uh, that is something that this board has to weigh heavily, and we appreciate everyone's engagement. Um, I, I don't know about, but I think between this morning and this meeting, I've gotten about five. Emails specific about a levy and potential layoffs or, uh, budget cuts and all of those things. And I think that that is something that people are concerned about, and at, at present, I just want to reiterate Dr. James, uh, comments during his report. Because. Even as we've been sitting in this meeting after Dr. James's comments, I've gotten an email about potential layoffs. There is no plan for that. Plans for budget cuts, uh, at this time. Um, and so I just want to make sure that I just reiterate that, because I did just get an email about that just now. So. Um, any other comments, uh, for Mr. Pendleton, or do you have anything else, Ashley? Okay, uh, anything else for the, uh, Finance and Capital Management, uh, Committee?
No, thank you.
Moving to, uh, instructional policy, Mrs. Uh, Mansfield and Mrs. McKittrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, most of our updates you've already heard from Superintendent James and Dr. McWilliams Woods. Uh, the bulk of our meeting, we talked about, um, our remote plan, our remote plus plans that begin February first. And we also talked about the timeline to, uh, get our kids back in school, those who choose that one hundred percent option. Um, that was the bulk of our conversation, and now, uh, Ms. Mansfield is gonna talk about the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative Grant. Thank you.
Great. Um, I mentioned it during the consent agenda because it's such an important grant for our district, and it's a great recognition of our work. Um, it's a one, uh, one point five million dollar grant to, um, help with our elementary. College and Career Academy launch, um, and there, that five-year plan development. We are going to help map out the timeline and structural policy for bringing that plan to the board for approval by this summer. And, um, let's see, it's also to fund student and faculty equity strategies. And be proactive in identifying racial, cultural, and class biases, as well as policies, practices. Wow, there's a lot of consonants in this. And to, to institutional barriers that negatively impact students, um, and their sense of belonging and learning. So really important stuff. And this, uh, meeting, we welcomed Ms. Autry to our committee, and she's gonna share a little bit more.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Mansfield. So, um, additionally, um, out of the. The CZI, uh, funding, um, grant, they will be allocating two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty. Uh, to United Way, um, to support, uh, additional family resource centers, um, specifically. Uh, one and a half with one or a half in the, uh, Kenmore Cluster and one in the North Cluster. So, um, just wanted to, uh, share that as well, looking forward to, uh, bringing those. Additional, uh, supports, um, into the district, um, in the North and the Kenmore Cluster.
Thank you. Thank you ver- thank you very much. Is there, uh, any other questions or feedback? Um. Um, instructional policy? Um, okay, so, um, I did want to, um, ask just one question. More so about the incentives for, uh, the get to school. I know there's been questions about that. I know that was talked about at instructional policy. I believe, um, Dr. McWilliams Woods talked about that. So she be able to talk just a little bit about that process. Uh, for our families as well.
Uh, sure, and I'm, I will also have, uh, Ms. Chapman, um, hop in to for the get to school campaign. You know, the, that whole campaign is geared around our in attendance incentives. We have some very specific goals. Uh, this was pre-COVID to improve attendance. And in particular, to reduce our chronic absenteeism. And a second really important indicator that we know through our partnerships with Summit Education Initiative. That if students have eight or fewer absences in a year's time, their academic achievement dramatically improves. So we, we really, we're looking at students with chronic absenteeism, but then we're looking at all the rest of the student body. To make sure that they are, um, staying below that eight or fewer absences. Uh, that's, that's the sweet spot for us. So the get to school campaign was brought in to help with the incentives. To support our students on those two major goals for the district. Uh, Ms. Chapman can talk a little bit more about some of the, you know, one or two examples of some of the major incentives that have happened right now. We will be, as part of the grant and the partnership with the Cle- Cleveland Browns Foundation, we have specific indicators that we're tracking. That we can give at the end of the year, we'll be able to give a report specifically on those indicators. Um, obviously COVID plays a little different role on how we're measuring attendance. It's a bit of an apples and orange comparison from last year to this year. Um, but we still get a basic sense of how students are doing, monitoring their daily attendance. We're still right around that ninety-two percent, uh, attendance rate that we've been pretty consistent all year with. Which, uh, is really very strong in a remote environment, especially compared to our other urban brothers and sisters. So Ms. Chapman, um, regarding the incentives.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McWilliams Woods. I think you hit it very well. The incentives are twofold. There are district-level incentives for buildings who are meeting their goals as part of their school improvement plans. And the work that they're doing with their attendance resource teams, which is another aspect of the Get to School Stay in the Game campaign. And then the other part of the incentive is building-based opportunities with funding. That allows buildings and those resource teams to purchase, um, incentives. That are tailored to their student population. So for some schools, that could mean that alarm clocks need to be purchased for students. That get them up on time. And another building, it could mean another set of school supplies that might need to be available for those students. Who are falling behind. So incentives, communications and marketing. And then work with the attendance resource teams are the three aspects of the Get to School Stay in the Game campaign. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh. The outstanding campaign. Um, and the work that you do, um, and the, the success that you've had so far, even, you know, we can't really. Uh, totally, uh, match that to the COVID reality, but, uh, pre-COVID, some of the success you have, I think, has been, um. A game changer, especially when you look at our graduation rates too and how it improved. Um, there has been small gains that we can at least point to. Um, already, so thank you for that. Going to, um, the Equity Committee, uh, Dr. Hall. Going to um the Equity Committee, uh Dr. Hall.
Uh no report at this time, Mr. President. Um yes, no report at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. I said I muted myself. So uh and that's, there, there is absolutely no unfinished business um as well as we have no new business. However, we do have a need uh to recess into executive session. Before I go into that spiel, I want to ask any board member uh or administrator if there's anything additional they want to bring before the board tonight. Here I am seeing none. Um I will just share uh that we do have a need to recess into executive session. Uh to recess pursuant to Ohio revised code 121 uh dot 22G1 uh to consider the appointment, employment, missile, discipline, promotion, a demotion or compensation of a public employee or official um or the investigation of charges and uh complaints against a public employee, official licensee or regularly uh regulated individual unless the public employee, official licensee or regulated individual request a public hearing. We have that need. Uh we will open it up for been moved by uh Mr. Bravo and seconded by uh Mr. Alexander. Uh Mr. Pennington, uh roll call please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we will um all log out of this meeting and go into the exec session. For those of you watching, um we will return back. Uh there is no uh action that will need to be taken when we return. Uh therefore, I believe there'll be a quick uh adjournment once we return. So thank you very much, everyone who watched uh and look forward to seeing the board members in the executive session. Thank you. So thank you very much, everyone who watched, and look forward to seeing the board members in the executive session. Thank you.